All right, well, it's 9:00 AM, December the 14th. We'll call the meeting to order. I'll, would everybody stand and we'll say the blessing and pleas and leads. Dear heavenly Father and Lord, I just come to you, thank you, Lord, for all you do for us, just ask you now just to be with us as we go into this meeting for Titus County, just to ask that you just help us with the decisions we have to make and, Lord, just help us in everything that we do. Lord, I just want to lift up the folks that are sick with this COVID, just ask you just to help them and, Lord, the ones that's lost loved ones, we ask that you just be with them and let them know that you're there to comfort them, Lord. Lord, just be with our servicemen and women, just watch over and take care of them, bring them home safely, Lord. And, Lord, I just want to thank you for all you do for us, ask you just to go with us now through this meeting, be with our country as we are about to step into a new leadership. We just ask that you just be with us in that endeavor, Lord. Just go with us now and forgive us where we fail, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are you ready for me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you, sir.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Some strange meeting with one commissioner out and one county judge out. Commissioner Fitch finishes up his final day of quarantine and I'm at about day four of mine and hope to see you back early next week. So, we will begin here, keep in mind that I'll have a hard time hearing some of you, so my intent here today is just to kind of give some guidance on a few of these items as we consider those. You will only have three votes today. I will not be voting on any of these and I'll remind you that if there is anything on this agenda that you have any questions about, doubts about, don't feel comfortable moving forward with, please feel free to table them. I don't know that there's anything on here that will require you to table it, but just keep that in mind as an option. Do we have DA-elect Colley in the audience?
Yes, sir.
Very good, very good. All right, let's begin with our item number one on the agenda, public comment time. Is there anyone that would like to use this time to make any comments or requests of the court on non-agenda items in accordance with our Open Meetings Act? And as a reminder, you'll be able to address the court on any agenda item as we get to it.
There's none.
There are none. We will move on to consider a couple of sets of minutes. Item number two, the minutes from our last meeting on November the 23rd, that was three weeks ago.
Make a motion.
Applewhite.
All right, have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of approval of the November 23rd minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on then to the next set of minutes, that was from November 30th, a short special meeting that we had there to consider that one item.
Make a motion, we approve it.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And there are none. All right, let's begin with Commissioner's roadwork status report and I'll begin down on Commissioner Ford in from Commissioner Parker.
We've been trying to get some signs put back up that have been torn down for a while, had one guy doing that, had a couple that have been off taking vacation and also we've just been trying to do some patching in that, it's kind of what we've been doing.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Applewhite.
We, over the last two weeks, like I said, we had a couple guys on vacation and we've been, we put nine culverts in the last two weeks trying to get all those culverts taken care of and we've just trying to keep up and, but all we did was put them culverts in.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Riddle?
We've been doing my guys' favorite job, patching, 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 mostly in a couple of culverts and just cleaning and repair holes, salt spots, that's about it.
All right, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to item number five, considering possibly approve the payment of accrued vacation pay to DA-elect Colley out of the district attorney forfeiture funds. We have a situation here that, as you know, we don't typically prepare for payment of accrued vacation and other benefits like this, but we pay it as it comes up. Here we have a situation where David goes from a position of the assistant DA to an elected official position and at this time he has some accrued benefits that are due to him. And our line of thinking on this was that since his salary has been paid out of forfeiture funds of the district attorney that it would be appropriate to pay his accrued vacation out of these same forfeiture funds. And Barbara and I discussed this and Barbara got with DA Bailey who has provided her written documentation here and says that, in fact, he actually says this amount is accurate that Barbara had provided for him and I request the commissioners' court approval for this expenditure and he has quoted the criminal code here. So, his boss at the present time anyway, District Attorney Bailey, has given to do this and so therefore it is up to the commissioners to sign off on this decision to pay that. Barbara, is there anything you want to add to this?
No, sir, we're good.
The total amount here is in round numbers about $6,300 and so therefore if there's any questions or discussions, I or Barbara will do our best or even DA-elect Colley will do his best, otherwise I'll entertain a motion or discussions or question.
I might get motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve the payment of accrued vacation pay to David Colley.
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion on this matter? All right, if not, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of approval of this accrued vacation pay, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, and as you see there in the audience, we have District Attorney-elect David Colley, so welcome David to our meeting and David would like to discuss with you a proposed reconfiguration of the former tax collector office space at the annex for his use. And as those of you that are familiar with the office space that the DA and the assistant DA occupy right now, there's not much square footage back there and David has previously talked to us about some additional staff that we had previously approved for him that was at one time, I guess, a maximum of having an assistant DA and a receptionist and investigator and I suppose that he'll tell us some more about his anticipated needs there and what he's planning to do as far as personnel, but we've got to have a place to house these people and without spreading them all out, I believe that David has got some good ideas and he came to me a couple of months ago and began this process about who to talk to as far as doing the actual work there to that space. And I reminded him that we don't want to spend a lot of remodel money over there, but I felt like you might consider honoring his request if he can find a way to pay for it to rehabilitate that space over there where it would be more workspace available, more square footage and better suited to him and his new staff. So, I'll turn this discussion item over to David Colley.
All right, thank you, Judge. Can you say what I'm doing? I'm handing out some information about that to commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Judge. Last summer or this summer, whenever, we were talking about the budget, talking about staff, he mentioned needing a bigger space. That was really premature to address that at that point, you know, not knowing until the budget was done, you know, what staff I would have or be able to have and the space I would need for that. Now that that's done, I'll tell the commissioners' court that we've hired or will hire two legal assistants and those lined up, there have, there's been multiple individuals interested in the assistant district attorney position and I haven't hired anyone yet, but that could happen, it could happen soon, it could happen in a few months, I don't know and I don't want to predict. I want to make, I'm careful about that, I want to make the right choice on that one, for sure. And so, anyway, you know, pretty soon we're probably going to have four people in the office, including myself, for anyone who hasn't been over, you know, to the DA's office, it's a small, the current office is a small space, less than 600 square feet on my estimation. You know, three people are on top of each other and four people are just being worked for. Also, you know, they don't know, you know, the boss needs to be close to the employees and you don't need somebody, you know, of an employee's office, some other in the courthouse and some closet or something like that expecting that they're going to be as productive as they would be, you know, when the boss is out there. So, which then brings us to the old tax office and that's just been an open space for a while, it's been used for a couple of, you know, different things for a period of time as Riddle was over there. It's been during the burst of the, I don't want to say shutdown, but the clerk's office would go over there where they had their glass partitions because there's still the glass, you know, partitions there and so they would go over there to meet the people about business, give them, you know, some level of protection. Currently, I'm working in Judy's old office there, the inner office, so that way Mr. Bailey and I aren't just right on top of each other and, you know, keeping everything a little safer that way. So, you know, so that seems to be a good spot to remodel, to work the DA's office out. There was talk years ago about maybe a, another court with additional chambers and another courtroom on me and I think that's kind of, I think we've all kind of realized that's not something necessary to do for our court time and being divided up among two counties. So, it was, so then we started looking at that, it was suggested that a good way to do, because there's a cut through there, but from the probation office into the courtroom. So, it was suggested that a good way to do that might be to just put a hallway right there and keep that cut through. You know, there was, you know, a couple of years ago, that's all remodels, they could have that access in their, from their new office and so, so we're kind of going with that. If you did that, that puts, that gives about twice the square footage of my current space. It's about 1,200 square feet somewhere in there. That would give space for assistant DA's office, an office for me, a conference room, a counter up front for the two legal assistants, glass partitions to keep, you know, the whole reason we have them, the security door that's still there that Judy had, we would make use of that. And so, you know, given that idea, I sold out bids, I spoke with John McDermott with Big Dog Construction, Justin Stansel and then also Mr. Arlich with the ACH. Mr. Arlich told me that he was so covered up, he couldn't even come give me a bid. Justin came by and looked at it and made some notes and a couple of weeks later he said, "David, I'm just not going to be able to, I'm going to be stretching myself too thin, I just don't have the space to even, you know, tell you I can do something that I'm not going to be able to do or get to." So, the only bid we have is the one that I passed out to you, that's from John McDermott. He also kind of drew up, I don't think that sketch is to scale, but it kind of gives you an idea of what he's come up with. His bid's on the front, he's under 50,000, just barely and he has this sketch here. And so, basically what would happen is we would keep the same, you know, the glass wall that's on the, that's on the north end of that space, we would keep that, probably tenet so that, you know, somebody can't see right in the office, anybody who's been in that office and Mr. Riddle would know, if you're like back in Judy's office, that way there's a window there, you can't see out of it real well, people can't see in it real well, so something like that. We've made use of as much of the existing structure as there. There's already a counter there that would be manipulated to make it more feasible for two legal assistants working versus tax clerks working. We would still keep the glass partition that is there and work off that. We would keep the Judy's inner office there for the assistant DA and then close in the south, the south corner there towards the courtroom for the DA's office. There's open space there beside that, he wrote a copier break area, it's just a space and there's probably, there's probably going to be in a copier and files, that's probably what it would be. And then also, I can't remember who, I'd show or have it, but the old, quote, jury room, the courtroom B, you know, the DA's office has taken that over for closed files, so that's another space, you know, in the courthouse we're taking up that can be moved into this. As far as current DA's office, what it would be used for, Judge Sossier has expressed interest in using that for her chambers. Right now, she has a spot that's kind of right next to the courtroom separated by a door and before she had it, Judge Rawson had it, whenever Judge Woodson was still alive. Both have indicated that's not ideal, you know, you can hear, that they can hear what's going on in the courtroom and stuff that they don't need to be hearing unless they're on the bench and then vice versa, if they're on the phone, if they're in some conference, people in the courtroom can hear that. So, I think she would like that space, might be old space for judges' chambers. I do believe that, you know, I understand that there's a fund for remodeling the courthouse there and I understand that, you know, at some point, something's going to have to be done with the annex, that's the bid. And, you know, and I don't, you know, I don't think it's, you know, good to just blow that, but I think that's where these funds should come from. I think the space would give my office more productivity. I mean, you know, there's, you know, this is an example on a couple of things that this would alleviate, you know, when I'm getting ready on a murder case and I've got 150 exhibits, there's no space in the LDA's office. I mean, I've got it spread out on the floor trying to organize and step over them and it's, it's not very workable and you can't take that to some other place in the courthouse because any other place is public. In addition to that, the LDA's office has, you know, you know, no security that's already in place here, you know, and I've had situations where somebody's been into my office standing across from my desk, somebody didn't need to be in there before I could even stand up and that's not a, that's not a great situation at all and the space that we currently have is not really set up in a way that we could, you know, incorporate that without, you know, again, doing something like this. So, that's, that's the, this is the bid, this is what we're asking for, you know, I'm glad to answer any questions the court might have.
I don't have any questions, but I believe there is definitely a need for the items that David has described and I really believe that we should consider it, in my opinion. It's like a dungeon back where his office was, no more fence, wasn't a very pleasant place to be, I didn't think.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got anything?
The only thing I would like to say is that I'm like Al, I think it's something that's needed over there. I've been in David's office too and it's, it's pretty cramped and all in there and I think it's something that is needed and I think it'll benefit the county by doing so.
Dana, any comments?
No, I feel the same way they do and in fact, I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, I've got a, got a motion.
Second.
I have a second and I have a little bit of discussion here and David, I may have missed it, but did you discuss or mention how you could pay for this or how, what we need to be thinking about as far as making budget adjustments or do you have enough? Tell us your plan there.
Well, I mean, there's a fund already for that specific purpose and it's not going to deplete it or make a big chunk out of it and it's for remodeling the annex and it suggests that. I have forfeiture money, but as we've talked about before and why the county was, you know, asked to, you know, provide staff or to help supplement that is because that's, you know, that seems to be a dwindling fund and I've spent, you know, money on that getting ready for next year to get equipment, computer equipment and that sort of stuff in order to help out the law enforcement agencies and to, you know, save their manpower on doing, you know, tasks that have to be done one way or the other. So, you know, and I haven't asked the, you know, the court for any, you know, for that to come out of any place other than the forfeiture account and, you know, I would, I think it needs to come out of the fund that's earmarked for that, which would be the remodel fund.
Very good. Just as a reminder of what David is talking about there, we have, we have had monies budgeted for annex remodel for several years and we continue to carry that over. I think we've reduced it here from a half million or so that we had at one time down to an amount where we were at least anticipating work that could be accomplished in the next year such as, such as purchase of those two pieces of real estate there on the southeast corner. If we were successful in being able to buy those buildings, that would be step one and then of course, step two on beyond that would be architectural planning and such. So, we do have some monies there budgeted for annex remodel or annex rebuild, whatever you want to call it and that's, again, temporarily on hold until we're able to purchase either or both of those parcels at the back. So, I think that that is something that you could consider. Thank you, David. Any other discussion on this? This is a almost $50,000 decision here.
Ms. Cheryl got a question, Judge.
Okay.
She's coming.
I was just wondering, did we hire Glenn Calvert and pay him $5,000 to look at that building and I thought his report was, you didn't need to do anything, it needed to be coming down and start over?
Did you hear that, Judge?
No, I didn't. I heard something about Glenn Calvert who studied that building and what was, what was the rest of it and him making a determination that it wasn't a good building.
And to come down, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That was his findings that.
So, what do we do?
The extent of the remodel that we were considering at that time was not warranted by that building and we were going to end up spending more money on that building than we probably should considering the age and condition of that building and we were going to also kick in a lot of additional expenses in the way of a sprinkler system and secure, excuse me, and security measures as well as ADA. And so, yeah, that is a good point and that's, that is something that we want to keep in mind before we go spending too much money on this building. But I think that, I think that most of the work that's done here that John McDermott is proposing is, you know, would not kick in anything in the way of required additional upgrades to that building in the way of security or ADA or sprinkler system. We would certainly want to double check on that, make sure, but I believe this is a fairly mild reconfiguration of that office space, but that is a good point, Cheryl.
We got Jeff Parchman at the podium.
I'm all for doing this, but I think we need to find somebody out there that's willing to give us two extra bids so we can have something to compare to on this.
Did you hear that, Judge?
Yeah, I do. I do.
Judge, if I can address that from Mr. Parchman, certainly we, you know, anybody that's going to be doing anything with the courthouse needs to be a commercial builder that's insured and of course with what I handed out, you know, Mr. McDermott's, you know, insurance is on there too, is on there to show that. The reason I touched base with Stansel and with the ACH is because they would fit that You know, if there's anybody else that y'all know of that I haven't thought of, I don't know of anyone else who would fit that and so that's why we just had the one bid, Judge.
All right. Anyone else have comment on this or questions? All right, well, I do have a motion, I do have a second. All right, all in favor of approving DA Colley-elect's request for about a $48,000 revision? I think that, I would ask that maybe you consider in this motion modifying it to where we can confirm with McDermott and the city that this will not cause us to have to kick in any additional upgrades to that building. In other words, this is a light enough scope of work where it doesn't throw us into, you know, a full remodel that's going to require sprinkler system, additional ADA requirements, et cetera.
That'd be in my motion, too.
Okay.
Is the, pardon me, the ADA requirement, you know, we didn't put a ramp in when we cut that hole from the probation office, it steps over there and that's not ADA compliant. I hope that's, we need to do that, I believe, when we do the work on that building. I hope that's, we need to do that, I, I believe, when we do the work on that building.
Well, if you'll recall, I do, I believe there is some allowances made there for a ramp. And so that, that may be right. I don't know how much traffic there might be through that door, but that's definitely something that we should consider if there's going to be a good amount of traffic going in and out there and we need to make it ADA compliant. That would involve putting a, putting a ramp there that there is adequate space for there, I believe. All right, we'll take a vote here if you are ready to do that today. All in favor of honoring this request for David Colley with the stipulation that we'll make sure that there is not additional expenditures that will be required to kick in that would increase this over the $48,000. So all in favor, say aye. Is that a unanimous?
Yes, sir.
Very good. David, thank you very much for, for doing this and I appreciate you talking to those other contractors and I hope we can get the very most bang for the buck on this deal. And we'll touch base, I'll touch base with you next week and we'll get with the city, specifically their new code enforcement guy and construction guy and make sure that we're okay on all of this, specifically those ADA issues. All right, thank you, David. All right, moving on to item number seven and eight, we have a couple of our typical situations where Tim Taylor brings us bids that he has received on previously struck off properties that went to auction for non-payment of taxes, did not receive adequate bids. So we have that usual situation where we have low offers that don't come close typically to the taxable value of the property or the amount of the judgment. So on this first one, and let me make sure I've got lot 1B block 63. And Tim Taylor says, "I have received a bid for the purchase of this tract of land which had been previously struck off at a delinquent tax auction back in March of 2020. The bid is less than the amount of the judgment which led to the sheriff's sale. Therefore, before the sale can become final, if the sale is approved by your court, the consent of other taxing entities of the county is necessary as well. John Withrow and Terry Davis Withrow, adjoining landowners, have offered $2,000. The judgment amount is $12,196. The taxable value for this property is listed at $59,865. However, of that amount, it included a $56,535 for a house that is not habitable in its present condition. It's been abandoned and vacant for many years. By opinion, the tract will require extensive cleanup. I would request the court to take some action on this offer by either accepting or rejecting it this time." So that is item one of these two tax property. So you have a $2,000 offer here on this vacant, not a vacant lot, on a lot with an inhabitable house.
I went over there last week and looked at it and it is, it's like it's, the, the, the floors are cracked and one, and one part of it has fell through and it, and they, you see where they've been jacked up before on the side of the bricks on the outside. So it's, it's, I don't think it's good on the house is the tin, the metal roof and that's all that's good on the house.
How big is the lot?
It's a... She won't know what, how big, how big the lot was.
Listen if I can tell from any of these documents.
It's right on the corner there, right across from the cemetery. But I don't have, it's not a, it's, I know the house is pretty good sized, but I don't know how big the lot is.
Would you say a half acre?
I'd say it'd be a half acre.
And this is in Talco? I don't know if I'm into that or not.
Yes, if I didn't see it in Talco.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion or a table or whatever you like to do today.
Make a motion.
Motion is made to accept this offer of $2,000.
Second.
Have a second, all in favor of accepting this offer so that Tim Taylor can proceed with this sale and check with the other taxing entities. There's no discussions? All in favor, say aye. All right, let's move to this second piece in item number eight, considering possibly approved, the sale of a mobile home that was previously struck off the tax rolls. Tim has received a bid from AKJ Contractors, he's offered $500. The judgment amount was $3,036. The market value for this property is listed at $6,273. The mobile home is over 30 years old, not habitable, will have to be torn down where it is or undergo extensive remodeling work. It's been abandoned and vacant for many years. I would request the court to take some action, acceptance or rejection, and I've prepared a resolution. So you have a 30-year mobile home that we've got a bid for $500. Have no idea what AKJ Contractors intends to do with it.
I make a motion, we approve this offer.
Motion is made to accept the $500 offer.
Second.
And I have a second, any discussion? All in favor of accepting five, was that somebody wanted to discuss?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor of accepting, say aye. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number nine, this is an annual matter that we need to report to the TCDRS retirement plan, considering possibly approve any changes to our retirement plan and report that back to TCDRS by December 15th, which is tomorrow. This is an annual request that they have just to make sure that we are leaving our retirement plan as is. Our budget reflects no changes to that plan. We were informed of what the new rate would be and so therefore this is not in anticipation of making any change. That's not my intent here, but it is simply the intent to get the court approval to tell TCDRS to leave our plan as it is.
Do I understand that, keep it the same?
Yes, sir.
I need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make it.
Al made the motion.
All right, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Parker said.
And a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor of reporting to TCDRS our retirement plan caretakers by tomorrow that Titus County will make no changes this year to the retirement plan. All in favor, say aye. All right, moving on to item number 10, Barbara has brought to us another opportunity to join a purchasing cooperative. This one is called Choice Partners. They are a government-approved purchasing cooperative. Registering with them as many of these others is there's no cost involved to the county, but it does give us yet one more vendor that we can utilize to make purchases that are previously approved so that you don't have to go through the bid process if you, if you find something there. So Choice Partners is the name of the company and Barbara would simply like to have our approval to register with them.
Do you have anything?
I'm sorry?
Do you got anything you want to say?
No, I think he's, I think Judge Lee covered it well. Yeah.
She said you good, what did you say?
All right, I just need a motion if you like.
I'll make that motion.
Motion. And a second, all in favor of registering with Choice Partners as government-approved purchasing cooperative, say aye. All right, thank you. All right, item number 11, considering possibly approved, lowering the speed limit on County Road 43rd. I'll let Commissioner Parker tell you about that one.
I've had several people approach me about the speed limit, the speed on, on County Road 4030. It's a dead end road. Down at the very end of it, there's some apartments down there and they have had trouble with, with people driving way too fast down there, people trying to get out of their driveways and, and they have nearly gotten run over. So I'm requesting to drop it right now. It's, it's set at 40 miles an hour and I'm requesting that we drop the speed limit to 30 miles an hour through that stretcher road.
Any questions for Jimmy? All right, Jimmy, you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir, I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on Commissioner Parker's request to lower speed limit on County Road 4030 from the existing 40 miles an hour down to 30 miles an hour. All in favor? All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 12, Barbara has provided your reports here. Item 12 is to approve the oral and written reports of county officials.
Make sure we, motion we approve.
We have a motion to approve this report.
Second.
And a second, all in favor of approval, say aye. And then moving on to item number 13, our treasurer's report has been provided to you.
I make motion we approve treasurer's report.
Motion made. And a second, all in favor of approval of the treasurer's report, say aye. All right, item number 14, approved budget amendments. I have budget amendments 2021 dash 005, 006, and 007. The first of those three relates to the request by Five Star for 10% of their tanker grant that we approved at our last meeting on November 23rd. And that comes out of contingency in the amount of $25,000. The second item here is an increase to estimated grant revenue with an offsetting increase to estimated grant expenditures for the amounts due to Apriis Inc. This is related to our Savins Grant or the Texas statewide automated victim notification services. This is something that we do each year. This is a grant that helps with the notification of victims when the offender is getting ready to be released from jail. And Apriis, A-P-P-R-I-S, is the company that monitors this grant and provides that service. That is an amount of $7,970 in grant revenue and offsetting expenditure of the same amount. And then the last of these three is to decrease, a decrease to officer meals with an offsetting increase to other expense to allow the reimbursement to the reserve constable for meals while transporting. So this is a request from Ray Barrett Constable Precinct 2. We've got a $100 adjustment there. And again, this reimburses his deputies when they make these out of town runs typically for delivering a mental health patient. So those are your three budget adjustments there. If there's any questions and wise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make that motion.
We have a motion for approval, three budget adjustments. And a second, if there's no discussion, all in favor of approval of these three budget amendments, say aye. All right, thank you. Item number 15, sign pay orders and approve payment of our bills.
Make the motion, we pay our bills.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor of approval, say aye. And wrap it up with closing comments. I just want to make you aware of the fact that our Titus County Appraisal District Board of Directors, that we participate each year in casting votes for members on that board. We have a very good, longtime board member, Bobby Parr, who has served on that board for 10 years, has decided to retire from that position. They will have a reception for him tomorrow afternoon at the CAD. So tomorrow, December 15th, Bobby Parr. I took the opportunity to write a note to Bobby and thank him for our service. He's been, this is a relatively thankless position and I appreciate the 10 years that he has put in to that. And, and I think that's all I have. So I'll move on to Commissioner Riddle.
No, nothing.
Commissioner Applewhite.
Nothing.
And Commissioner Parker.
I have nothing, Judge.
Very good. All right, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. I will see you all next week. I'll be in touch with James on a daily basis and will make myself available as needed for, you know, with the phone or whatever. I am here and available and see you next week. If there is nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
And a motion.
Second.
And a second, and all in favor of adjournments, say aye. All right, thank you. James, I'll visit with you later.
Got you, bud.
Thank you.
All right, man.